Do we have anyone from the Sheriff's Office? Okay, I know we're recognizing someone. Okay, perfect. If you're in the Sheriff's uniform, just come on up. So we have solic- Clerk of Superior Court, anyone? Okay.
Next item on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing National Senior Center Month. If we could have Amber come forward to present. Or Melissa come forward and present.
Good af- good morning Chair Commissioners and pillars of the community. I forgot what to say, sorry. I'm subbing for Amber today and this is a proclamation in recognition of National Senior Center Month 2025. Whereas older Americans are significant and valued members of our society, sharing their time, wisdom, and experience to help them bridge and strengthen our community and senior centers. And our community and senior centers act as a meeting place where seniors are able to socialize, participate in activities, and share experiences. And whereas Henry County Senior Centers, including Bear Creek, Heritage Park, Hidden Valley, and Locust Grove, have acted as catalysts for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Henry County. And whereas through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older Americans to contribute to their own health and well-being as well as the betterment of their communities. And whereas senior centers fill an important function as community partners in ensuring that older adults in the community are able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas Henry County's four senior centers and their dedicated staff affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of the older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping into their experiences and skills and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, DeAngelo III, Michael Price, and Kevin Lewis, does hereby recognize September 2025 as National Senior Center Month and call upon residents to recognize the special contributions of the senior center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the senior members of our community this third day of September 2025. And I believe we're going to have Senior Center, Senior Services Director Sean Norris and several seniors come up for a picture with the board.
Yes. Okay, Sean. All of our wonderful seniors. Let me, let me get over here because I'm a senior too. So we're going to move into executive session. I need a motion.
Second.
All in favor. Okay, so we're going to take a short break to go into executive session and we'll return once we, once we're finished.
Also need a motion to approve the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion second, all in favor. Motion carries. Stephanie, is the employee years of service next? Okay. Holly, HR?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board and pillars of the community. Thank you for allowing me. We have a video to recognize our years of service recipients for September.
On behalf of Henry County, we would like to recognize employees who are celebrating years of service. Those being recognized celebrate their work anniversary in September for either their five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, or 30-plus years serving Henry County. We ask that those employees being recognized come forward when their name is called to receive their certificate and ask them to remain at the front for a group photo with the board. We ask the audience to hold your applause until all employees from each group have been announced. Individuals celebrating five years of service for September 2025 include Victoria Everett with Henry County, 911. William Holcomb with Henry County Police Department.
The five years, we're not able to make it at today's meeting.
Thank you.
Those celebrating 10 years of service for September 2025 include Hector Carassio with Henry County Police Department. Jonathan DiMarco with Henry County Fire Rescue. Jonathan Stevens with Henry County Police Department. Lord Foster with Henry County Police Department. Monet Jones with Henry County Sheriff's Office. Sanchez Minor with Henry County Fire Rescue. And Robert Shutro, Henry County Sheriff's Office. Celebrating 15 years of service for September 2025, Jerome Moore with the District Attorney's Office. Donald Cleveland, County Coroner. Celebrating 20 years of service to Henry County for September of 2025, John Floyd with the Henry County Sheriff's Office. Justin Bennefield with the Henry County Sheriff's Office. Kelly Johnson with the Tax Assessor's Office. Mark Raulman, Henry County Police Department. Scott Cundy, Henry County Police Department. Celebrating 25 years of service for September 2025, Millicent Hollis. With the Henry County Tax Assessor's Office. We have one employee celebrating more than 30 years of service with Henry County in September 2025. With immense gratitude, Henry County extends a heartfelt thanks to you for your unwavering dedication and exceptional contributions. Thank you Chair and Board for this time at today's meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Proclamation recognizing September as national preparedness? Is that, we did that when I? Oh, the pillars, okay, I'm sorry. Twenty, twenty-five, second pillars, quarter pillars of excellence. Okay, Ms. Shannon?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, pillars of Henry County's staff and community. I'd like to ask our County Manager if she would join me, as well as our Deputy County Manager. On this morning, we are recognizing employees who have been, who've been caught demonstrating excellence with our five pillars, being accountability, collaboration, physical stewardship, integrity, and service. I'd like to start. As I call individuals' names, I'm going to ask them to come forth and stand with the board for a photo. Our first employee was observed addressing and correcting a negative behavior displayed by another team member. Not displayed by another team member, not out of obligation, but out of genuine commitment to Henry County's values. This employee approached the situation with grace and professionalism, using it as an opportunity to reinforce the importance, importance of good customer service. What is even more commendable is that this employee did this act quietly, without bringing it to leadership's attention and without knowing that the act was being observed, showing true leadership in her actions. Her integrity has set a tone for those around her and positive, and has positively impacted the team and culture. For accountability, we'd like to recognize Ms. Deborah Hudson. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. The next employee has shown a willingness to serve as the case management trainer for the department. They've taken on this role voluntarily and continue, out of their own understanding for the need for new officers to be able to gain knowledge of the on-the-job in a consistent fashion from one person. They've unselfishly given of their time, ensuring that new officers are well-equipped and knowledgeable in performing their duties, while also maintaining their own caseload exceeding two hundred probationers. This employ- when this employee noticed others are absent and when the department is stretched thin, this employee takes on other oper- steps in in other operational areas and has shown and committed to a willingness to assist in the courts by writing census sheets and performing intake duties. Their versatility adds value to their collaboration to the mission and purpose of the department. Even when officers are trained, this employee remains available to them and as a resource to their continued growth. According to this department head, this employee lives through the quote by Ms. Maya Angelo, which says, "If you get, give. If you learn, teach." Please help me in acknowledging Ms. Nira Colombo with fitness enforcement. The next employee exhibits all of our pillars of excellence and has taken the lead in coordinating the Public Safety Summer Camp and overseeing the overall daily operation. This employee is responsible for scheduling several collaborative meetings with other participating departments in public safety. And within these meetings, they're ensuring that each department understands their role, responsibility, as well as how they impact the overall mission. They've displayed specifically physical stewardship by identifying and securing sponsors for these events, lessening the financial burden on Henry County. Please assist me in recognizing for physical stewardship Captain Stroud. Thank you, Captain. The next employee consistently demonstrates professionalism and ethical conduct in all of their interactions with both employees and taxpayers. They are a pleasure to work with and it is clear that the citizens of Henry County feel the same. In one notable instance, a taxpayer so grateful for this employee's guidance on a tax matter returned to the off- to the office to offer the employee a cash gift. Aware of the ethical standards for Henry County, this employee graciously attempted to decline the gift, but the individual had left the office. This employee immediately recorded the incident on the live security camera and reported it to their director. The cash was then prepared and sent to finance to be deposited in Henry County's general fund. The action exemplifies how Mrs. Kayla Head has unwavering integrity and commitment to doing the right thing. For our pillar of integrity, please help me in acknowledging Ms. Kayla Head from our Tax Assessor's Office. Lastly, our fifth pillar, service. We're recognizing an employee who works primarily on our county's fire and emergency aspiratus. They utilize their skills, knowledge, and determination to ensure the maintenance and service of these assets are always in proper operating order. Please assist me in recognizing Mr. Adam Cochrane. Excuse me. If we can have Executive Director Hutch Purvis and Assistant Director Rhett Everett, please join us for photos. Thank you Commissioner, Commissioners. We do ask that those employees recognize this morning, if they could remain a little longer, we will like to do individual photos of them with their particular pillar. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, congratulations to all of the employees for, um, their excellent work and, you know, being pillars of the community and pillars of, um, you know, the county. So, we appreciate each and every one of you all. Our next item on the agenda is proclamation recognizing September as National Preparedness.
Good morning again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. This morning, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of September as National Preparedness Month. Whereas National Preparedness Month is recognized each September to emphasize the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that can strike at any time, impacting lives, property, and the stability of our communities. And whereas Henry County is susceptible to a variety of hazards, including severe weather, floods, fires, public health emergencies, and man-made incidents, which require proactive planning and coordination among government agencies, businesses, community organizations, and residents. And whereas, emergency preparedness is a shared responsibility for all individuals, families and schools and businesses who play a vital role in building a more resilient Henry County. And whereas, Henry County Emergency Management and Homeland Security is committed to enhancing public safety through the coordinated planning, public education, emergency training, and the development of community-based response and recovery strategies. And whereas, Henry County Emergency Management and Homeland Security collaborates year-round with state, local, and federal partners to strengthen the county's capabilities to prepare for, respond to, and recover from emergencies of all types. And whereas, National Preparedness Month serves as a timely reminder for all residents to take practical steps to prepare themselves and their loved ones by creating emergency plans, building disaster supply kits, staying informed, and participating in community preparedness initiatives. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of Chair Carlotta Harrell, Vice Chair Neat Robinson, and Commissioners Johnny Wilson, DeAnglin III, Michael Price, and Kevin J. Lewis, does hereby declare September 2025 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all residents to take action toward personal and community preparedness, engage with local emergency management programs, and commit to fostering a culture of readiness and resilience through Henry County. So proclaim this third day of September 2025. And I believe we have our Director of, um, EMA here and some of his colleagues and staff, and they'd like to picture with you.
Okay, if everyone would come forward so we can take a picture. Okay, next item on the agenda is presentation requesting approval of three resolutions. Those three resolutions are the Henry County Transportation Safety Action Plan, the Henry County Moving Toward Vision Zero Community Goal, and the Henry County Complete Street Policy. Can we have the famous Sam Baker present?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. Thank you, Madam Chair, for moving this agenda item from the very bottom of the agenda to the top of the agenda. I really appreciate that. You just exceeded my expectation today. This is Henry County's recent crash statistics. I would ask everybody to take a moment and review these numbers. Let these numbers sink in for a while. Twenty-four people were killed in crashes on Henry County roads last year. Four thousand five hundred eleven people were injured. Commissioners, our roads are dangerous and we need to do something about it. Against this backdrop, Henry County applied for and was awarded a federal grant by the U.S. Department of Transportation. This grant is called Safe Streets and Roads for All Planning and Demonstration Grant. This grant was given to us to develop a safety action plan, to come up with ways to lower these numbers and make our roads safer for all Henry County citizens. I am pleased to report to you this morning that we have come up with a plan for your consideration and adoption. We retained a consulting firm called Modern Mobility Partners to develop this plan for us. I have here with me Ms. Julia Billings with Modern Mobility Partners to present the Henry County Transportation Safety Action Plan. I would ask Ms. Billings to come forward and to present the plan.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning about the Transportation Safety Action Plan. In this morning's presentation, I will be discussing the plan process, including an overview of the plan, the background on the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, as well as the analysis conducted throughout the study, which included safety analysis, analysis of the high injury and high-risk networks of the roadway, demographic analysis, and the public engagement process. I'll conclude with the recommendations from the plan, which focused on three key areas, which are engineering recommendations at specific locations in the county, safety countermeasures toolkit, and policy recommendations. So a quick overview of the Transportation Safety Action Plan. As Sam mentioned, this plan was funded through the U.S. DOT's Safe Streets and Roads for All program, which aims to identify and address transportation-related safety concerns in the community and establish action steps towards eliminating or significantly reducing traffic crashes and fatalities. The SS4A program uses the safe systems approach, which requires the adoption of a commitment towards eliminating or significantly reducing traffic fatalities. The program also supports applications for implementation funds. So having a Transportation Safety Action Plan adopted sets the county up for that opportunity to apply for those additional funds. The graphic on the slide shows the overall safe systems approach that focuses on both road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roads, and post-crash care. It recognizes that safety is a sh- is a shared effort, including roadway design as well as driver behavior. The plan's vision was for Henry County and the cities of Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough, and Stockbridge are committed to improving mobility and reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries for all modes of transportation and all community members. The plan's goals were to promote a culture that prioritizes safety, increases the use of non-automobile modes, improves maintenance of roadways and facilities, and identifies improvements that can be implemented quickly. This shows the overall plan schedule, so it started nearly a year ago, back in October of 2024. Um, we presented once previously to the Board of Commissioners and City Councils in January of 2025, and throughout the process, we have met with the Roadway Safety Stakeholder Committee, um, group, as well as the public on several occasions. The beginning part of the planning process focused on the safety and technical analysis, then leading into the recommendation phase, and we are now at the end stage where we have a draft plan document, which is posted on the county website, um, and ready for your adoption. The other four cities will also vote this month on adoption of the plan. So now I'll talk a little bit about the plan's safety analysis. Sam shared the past five years of crash data. In the plan document, you will see the crash data broken down by location, uh, within each city and the county, unincorporated portions of the county, the crash severity, so fatal and serious injury crashes called out, manner of impact, um, this gives us information about the types of crashes that are happening and the reasons behind those crashes, and other conditions are documented. There were three main spatial analyses done as part of the plan. The first was the high injury network. This is shown in the, uh, the map with the yellow on it. These are the highest crash locations on non-interstate roads, uh, with the highest number of injuries and fatalities. Similarly, the map with the pink line shows the high-risk network. This map is different in that it is not based on where crashes have occurred, but where they could occur based on design factors that are known to be associated with, um, crashes and serious injuries and fatalities. Things like speed and roadway design configuration. The third spatial analysis was a demographic analysis as required by the Safe Streets for All program. This used the Atlanta Regional Commission's demographic class groupings and overlaid that with the crash data. Public engagement was an important part of the process as well. We engaged with over a thousand Henry County residents. We had a mix of in-person pop-up events, like the ones shown in the pictures, as well as online presence through social media, the, uh, Henry County, um, transportation website, and other online sources. We also had a virtual public meeting and regularly occurring stakeholder, um, meetings as well. And finally, the recommendations. So there were three groups of recommendations, the first being the engineering recommendations. So for each jurisdiction within the county, the four cities and unincorporated, um, Henry County, there was a priority corridor identified where the highest crashes were occurring. And I'll talk about each one in just a moment. We also looked at where these occurred with, in relation to previously identified projects to make sure that nothing was, um, counter, you know, counterproductive in terms of the recommendations. So for Henry County's priority safety corridor, this was Willow Lane and Industrial Boulevard, actually very close to where we're standing today. Um, this corridor was identified based on its crash data, um, and other factors. You can see in the table the number of crashes as well as fatal and serious injury crashes, and some specific identif- specific recommendations were identified for intersections along this segment, as well as the non-intersection portions of the corridor. Similar recommendations were done for each of the cities, which will be shown in the City Council presentations. The second, the second group of recommendations was the Safety Countermeasure Toolkit, which is shown here. This was grouped into speed management, vulnerable road user infrastructure, which is primarily those not inside of a vehicle, so those walking and biking, intersection safety, visibility enhancements like lighting, and traffic calming. And these are some screenshots from the plan document that show some of those countermeasures. The final set of recommendations is the policy recommendations. So this includes the Complete Streets Policy that Sam will speak on, as well as the Moving Toward Zero Policy required by the Safe Streets Program that Sam will also speak on. There's also a recommendation to update the county's Unified Land Development Code to prioritize transportation safety, prioritize transportation safety along the county's freight network, and lastly, improve first responder coordination and public awareness for better post-crash care. That concludes the presentation this morning. Again, the plan document is on the website, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, as well as my contact information is provided along with Sam's.
Okay, great. Thank you, um, Jill. Um, I, I do have a couple of questions. I, I don't know if you can go back some slides. It was something on there about bicycles, um...
Here? No, let's see. Was it on the corridor?
Yeah, I, I'm not really sure, but I just really wanted to, um, you know, bicycle safety and sidewalks are huge, um, and as, as well as our walking trails, but the sidewalks and bicycle, because we don't have bicycle lanes, per se, um, is that incorporated in this, um, report, or can it be incorporated in this report to look at far as bicycle safety, uh, for those individuals that do ride their bicycles, um, in the streets, and then also, um, having sidewalks? And, and county manager, I, I think that we were doing some type of study about sidewalks. Were we doing a study to see which areas of the county, uh, from a safety perspective, um, that sidewalk should be? Um, I know that we recently received an email from, uh, a constituent along the 138 corridor, and I know that we have been addressing that issue with, uh, the city of Stockbridge as well as Clayton County, because the majority of that Highway 138 are within those jurisdictions. We only have a small portion of that, but, uh, still, you know, just, um, how do we incorporate the sidewalks, the crosswalks, and, and those types of things? Is that incorporated in this report?
So let's talk about the bicycle, um, aspect that we talked about. We formed a stakeholder committee as part of this plan development process. We took individuals from various segments of the Henry community, including bicyclist, uh, group. Um, bicyclist groups, they have expressed that they would feel safer if there were bike lanes that are separated and not just a line drawn on the road, that there be some dividers to giving them some shelter from passing cars at high speed. Uh, so that is one suggestion that we can take from, um, the bicyclist community. Uh, regarding sidewalks, uh, the Henry County Transportational Plan that we developed and adopted back in 2022 identifies where sidewalks are needed in the county. We have a long way to go. Uh, there are many roads where, uh, there are no sidewalks. Uh, the good thing is that, um, the Transportation Special Purpose Local Off-Sales Tax that the voters approved, uh, did dedicate some funds towards sidewalks as, as well as Spots Six referendum that passed last November. So, we have some funds to build more sidewalks, and the plan tells us where to build them. More needs to be done, of course.
And, and, Mr. Kirk, if he can speak to it as well, but we're also in the process of updating the redevelopment code. And I know that as part of the ULDC, we do require sidewalks already internally, but I do believe that that is something that we're looking at externally, especially in these areas along these high-traffic corridors. One of the other things, things that we've looked at is specifically in areas where schools are located, making sure that when those developments come in, they are incorporating crosswalks and sidewalks so that those students who choose to walk to school are able to do that as well. So, Mr. Kirk, let's just make sure we document that, um, as we get ready to finalize the ULDC.
Okay, awesome. Um, Commissioner Wilson, did you have any comments or questions?
Um, several accidents happened in my area, most likely throughout the county due to low visibility when we're in curves and over hills. Other than signage, what can be done to eliminate or minimize accidents?
Specifically at night? Johnny, are you talking?
Well, it's both, it's, yes.
This topic was discussed multiple times before. The road don't have lighting, uh, in the dark, and that is a factor in, uh, crashes and injuries. Uh, we need to find, uh, identify funding, how to, uh, install lights. Uh, I'm with you. We need to install lights on, um, some number of Henry County roads. Uh, maybe this is something, uh, we need to explore more, where to find that funding.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I just want to add, um, even like with the county manager stated, you know, in our school zones, um, but even like you said with our parks and our trails, um, some of our communities, um, if there's an opportunity to have the digital slow down sign, um, the digital signs, that would be great, because I do know, like, on the 138, um, and I think it's the spear, because there was an accident there recently in Spivey, I'm just talking District Two, um, if we can get those digital signs, um, to indicate the speed, um, that would help, um, as well. But when we're talking about the, um, bike trails, I want to see a lot more, when, you know, excuse me, bike lanes, when it comes to where our parks are. Um, because even if we can enhance that now, I think we, certain things that we can do, um, now, um, if we can do that, I would love to see us do that, because I know you and I had a conversation prior, um, even at Cochran Park, to be able to look like downtown Decatur, how they have their lanes, if we can just, just the markings, um, and, and, you know, star in that way. You know, some, to me, it's just low-hanging fruit. If we can, you know, instead of just the dollars, certain things, if we can, you know, enhance that in-house, that would be great.
So you would like to see bike lanes where parks are, the Henry County Trails Plan recommends, uh, trails, uh, connecting our parks. In addition to that, the Henry County Parks and Recreation Plan that we adopted last year further enhances, um, the trail network, the proposed trail network. Uh, so I would like to see the, that proposed trail network envisioned in the Parks and Recreation Plan become a reality, um, achieving your desire as well as mine. Uh, so, we have a, a T-Splus two referendum that we're thinking of next year. Let's try to find some funding for it to better connect our parks with some new proposed trails.
Yeah, and just to add to that in conclusion, even like Flipping Road is, you know, that road is long overdue right there by the park. Um, you know, having that access, um, is definitely a plus for that area as well, so, looking forward to that.
Yeah, people actually love to ride bike away from busy roads, off-road trails, is what bicyclists and citizens prefer.
Right. Thank you, Sam, for all what you're doing.
So, thank you all, Sam. Thank you, I appreciate it. A couple of questions. You mentioned the bike lanes, and I, you just answered a couple of questions there, but what did the cyclists prefer, like a visual barrier, or a hard-fix barrier, or just being completely separated from the roadway itself?
You may have seen, uh, roads where they put some, um, not metal, but maybe rubber.
The rubber, yep.
Yes, I don't exactly what it's called, but these are like columns, rubber material that sets a divider between the bicyclists and the cars. Uh, so a line is not enough, and the bicyclists simply don't feel comfortable, a car passing by at thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour. So a divider is needed, but that's not going to, if a car hits, it's not going to damage the car.
So it serves more as, and this is the reason I was asking, because they use those in Spain quite a bit. So I bike quite a bit when I travel. So, they use those in Spain as a divider there. Um, Argentina, when I was there, they get to use the sidewalks there a lot. And then in Amsterdam, they have their own bike lanes, which is amazing, if y'all have ever been to Amsterdam. I mean, everybody bikes there. So, that's something that interests me. How do we get the roads and make it more efficient for folks who actually want to bike around the communities and necessarily hop in their vehicle? Um, one other question is on the intersection recommendations. I don't see anything, or maybe I missed it, that addresses maybe using roundabouts as a safety mechanism versus using signal lights. Um, is that something that's going to be in the study?
Roundabouts have shown in many studies that, uh, they improve safety, because a car doesn't have to come to a complete stop, and it reduces rear and collision. So, yes, it is one of the safety toolkits recommended in the plan, as well as it has been shown in multiple studies. Roundabouts do improve safety.
Okay.
And just one, one more point. Adoption of this plan will, uh, make Henry County eligible to apply for implementation grants from the U.S. DOT. So it says one step towards getting us, uh, eligible for federal funds to apply for, to implement some of the things that you're asking about. Thank you all.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, and, and that was actually, uh, going to be my point, Sam, is saying that actually the implementation of this plan, uh, given us eligibility for funding. And I know there are, there are a lot of wants and a lot of needs for the community, and, and I know at the heart of it is how do we pay for it. So, you know, my, my focus, just listening to the, to the plan and looking at what we're doing, is we have to figure out a way to pay for it, because, you know, some of the roads we have are, not, not only are they county roads, they're just country roads, and, you know, a lot of them need to be widened. It takes, it takes a lot of money to do that. So, so my, my ask is that when we do do T-Splasts, that we pay special attention to incorporating funding in T-Splasts, uh, to make sure that we add some capability for, uh, bike lanes and also some, some road widens as well. So, thank you.
I would like to thank you all again for the work. I think, um, my ask has already been, uh, stated, and that is that this plan, once adopted, will be incorporated with our ULDC as well as highway overlay districts. Um, I was curious, though, about the Willow Lane, um, since that is part of my district, uh, what exact improvements are being recommended to reduce the number of crashes, because I know we are getting ready to widen a portion of it, but from the 2081, uh, to the roundabout, it still would be a two-lane. So, do you have any idea of what kind of improvements that can be done in that section of that corridor that may help with the crash?
I believe the plan gives a list of, uh...
Yeah, so is this, this is the section on the slide you're talking about from, from the Willow Lane portion from, on the left side of the slide?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so, the, I'm not sure off the top of my head which ones apply to which particular locations in the corridor, but some of the recommendations, so we split it up into recommendations that were more appropriate at intersections versus those that were more appropriate for sections between the intersections. So for the intersections, it was things like just improving the existing crosswalk for visibility, you know, with paint and striping for higher visibility, reconfiguring those ramps to meet ADA standards, um, installing the, those rectangular flashing beacons that are for pedestrian-only that are more of a signal to vehicles than just signage alone or just a crosswalk alone. Um, and then curb extensions, or sometimes called, um, bulbouts, or, um, other, there's a variety of names for them, but essentially reducing the distance that the pedestrian has to cross, um, by extending the curb out a little bit without necessarily reducing vehicular lanes. Um, and then also pedestrian refuge, pedestrian refuge islands, um, to allow the pedestrians, if they're not able to fully cross in one go, to have a safe place to stop, um, a physical space in the roadway, um, to stop during their cross. And then for the segments, it would be evaluating the speed limits, um, installing additional lighting, which is a frequent recommendation throughout the plan, um, looking for any gaps in the sidewalk, and making sure that those are continuous with either sidewalk and/or a multi-use trail. a multi-use trail for sidewalk, for walking and biking.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. And so I guess what I would like to see from this standpoint is making sure that all of our plans are merged together, because, Sam, you talked about the Parks and Rec Plan, you've talked about all these plans that, that we have in place, and if they're not merging and working together, we just got a bunch of plans in various departments. And so I'm hoping that we are taking all of the plans that, if this is adopted today, that you're looking at what Parks and Rec are doing, that it is matching with our ULDC, that our ULDC is requiring those businesses and developers that are coming in, building in our community, to put up lighting, oops, in certain areas. And so I just want to make sure from a standpoint that we are all working together in all the departments, just to make sure that the plans that we have in place, that we are looking at everything, that everything is, is working together. And so I appreciate the report, and I would like to, at this point, call for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the Transportation Safety Action Plan.
So it's all three plans, correct? Stephanie, can, can you read all three of those plans for me?
Actually, I have more too.
Okay.
After this item, I have two more.
Oh, so you have two more? So this is just the Safety Action Plan?
It's just the number one.
So this, you have one presentation?
Yes.
We got two more.
We got two more. They will be, they will be shorter, I promise you.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, then, so can I get a motion for the, the Safety Action Plan, then?
So.
Okay, all in favor. Motion carries, okay.
The SS4A Plan, Planning Grant that Henry County received from the US Department of Transportation requires Henry County to adopt a community goal, either eliminating or significantly reducing the number of crashes that result in fatalities and serious injuries. The proposal I have before you is to consider adopting a community goal, reducing the number of crashes that result in fatalities and serious injuries on Henry County roads by sixty-five percent from today's level by December 31st, 2050. Now, why sixty-five percent? As I mentioned to you earlier, we formed a Stakeholder Committee as part of the plan development process. Our stakeholders considered three different options. The first option was 100% elimination, or total elimination of crashes, injuries, and fatalities. The second option was eighty-five percent reduction. The third option was sixty-five percent reduction. Our stakeholders felt that a total elimination of crashes, injuries, and fatalities, while it would be ideal and perfect, it's simply not, it's not realistic in light of Henry County's growth in population. And the amount of dollars that we have to spend to make all the road improvements to achieve that lofty goal is cost prohibitive. So at the end, after all the discussion, our stakeholders settled on sixty-five percent reduction. And staff feels that we currently have an upward trend in the number of crashes, injuries, and fatalities. If we can at least reverse this trajectory and bring it down gradually and decrease it sixty-five percent by 2050 from today's level, we feel that it will be a significant accomplishment. So I propose that you consider adopting a community goal of sixty-five percent reduction by 2050. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I do have a question, a couple of C's in that presentation, and this one about the age group of percentages associated with the percentages on the crashes. Is, my question for, would be if, if we're having a percentage, a large percentage of crashes between eighteen and twenty-five, you know, that's inexperienced drivers. Twenty-five may be pushing it, but eighteen to twenty would be like inexperienced driver. Do you have that data for, for the age group of the crashes?
I don't have data particular to that age group. The data that I shared with you, it's for all the age groups combined. It showed that over the last four, five years, there has been a gradual increase, while last year there was a decrease in crashes, injuries, and fatalities, and...
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we have some work to do in bringing it down. It's not going to happen in a short period, that's why you're looking at the year 2050. And not a goal of total elimination, but at least reducing significantly.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? And so, Sam, what is the ask today?
Adopt a resolution setting a community goal for Henry County to reduce the number of crashes that result in fatalities and serious injuries by sixty-five percent from today's level by December 31st, 2050.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the community goal of reducing fatal crashes and serious injuries by sixty-five percent by December 31st, year 2050.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. There's no further questions, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you. Lastly, the Henry County Transportation Plan, this board adopted back in 2022, as well as the Henry County Transportation Safety Action Plan you all adopted earlier today. Both of them recommend that Henry County adopt something called a Complete Streets Policy. Now, the term Complete Streets refers to planning, designing, constructing, and rehabilitating roads that takes into consideration the needs of all users. And when I talk about all users, I'm talking about pedestrians, bicyclists, senior citizens, children, disabled individuals, transit users, emergency responders, truck drivers, car drivers, and everybody else. Now, the graphic on the bottom left shows roads before and after Complete Streets treatment with addition of bike lanes, center turn lanes, crosswalks, sidewalks, and so on. Now, not every road in Henry County needs to be a Complete Streets. There'd be a couple of exceptions. There are roads that prohibit certain users, such as pedestrians and bicyclists, which mainly highways. Any routine maintenance projects need not be, include a Complete Streets treatment. If there are two parallel roads and one of them is a Complete Street, there's no need for both of them to be Complete Street. In areas of the county where there's a scarcity of population, travel, or attractors, there's probably no need for Complete Streets there. And lastly, if the cost of Complete Streets accommodations is excessively disproportionate to the need or probable use. Other than these limited exceptions, I recommend that we adopt a Complete Streets policy that going forward, we will take into consideration the needs of all users of roads and not just car drivers. And thus, recommend adoption of the Henry County Complete Streets policy.
Okay, is there any questions from the board?
I have a comment and question. If we do approve this, I would just like to ensure that it does become a part of the ULDC and the Highway Overlay District. My question is, for those roads that will qualify for the Complete Streets, how would we go about implementing that? Or maybe a comment or statement is, let's be concerned that we also would need to acquire the right-of-way to expand these particular streets, you know, to include the bike lanes? Because we may have a road that currently doesn't have the bike lanes, and if we do make that particular street or corridor a safe street or a Complete Street, then we would have to make sure we can get the right-of-way acquired to be able to do that as well, so adjust that observation.
The Henry County Complete Streets Policy suggests that all the different departments, including the Planning and Zoning Department, the SPOS Department, and the Department of Transportation, we all work together to implement this Complete Streets Policy, which may include updating the ULDC that you talked about. And even when we plan or contemplate constructing or upgrading a road, we take into consideration the recommendations of this Complete Streets Policy, and all of us work together to make it happen.
Any other questions or comments? No, can I get a motion to approve the Henry County Complete Streets Policy?
Can I move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No, no further questions, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Great presentation. Can you get these slides that you showed us, share with the commissioners? The slides that Julie went through? Can you share those slides with us? Thank you. Next item is...
Certainly.
Okay. Next item is financial update.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board, and pillars of the community. If allowed, I'd like to be as brief as possible in going through the presentation. I'll be providing financial update of the general fund, its service districts, SPOS, T-SPOS, impact fees as of fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. I know there's a lot of questions, so I'll also provide a very brief update on where we stand for the fiscal year 2024 audit. This slide shows the impact fee amount as of June 30th, 2025, availability by district. Impact fees are spent on new capital improvements or equipment. As of June 30th, 2025, there's approximately fourteen and a half million dollars of collective impact fees remaining. I did not make any adjustments to this particular slide with regard to the expenses coming out. We're currently making reimbursements from prior litigation on impact fees, so this slide has not been updated for those particular payments. To date, we paid out about $430,000 to about seventy-eight particular respondents. This slide just basically talks in summary about where we stand for year-to-date revenues. Year-to-date revenues as of June are $275.6 million, or 106% of budgeted revenue. We're favorable against the budget, $15.9 million, reflecting the property tax revenue increase from the village rate. Year-to-date expenditures are $4.8 million unfavorable to budget. Unfavorable expense items do include contracted services for legal, prisoner, medical, my accounting department, and Parks and Rec maintenance supplies, and utility costs. Full year, we are expected to be $11.1 million favorable to budget. This expected favorability will be used to address public safety, debt service, and critical operational needs. Anything remaining after addressing that is going to go to fund balance. This year again, we were heavily impacted by unplanned one-time items contributing to the budget overages, primarily Parks and Rec and the HVAC repairs. The next few slides are just the financial representations of revenues and expenditures. Prior to this presentation, we provided that, a more detailed breakdown by department on where they stand. SPOS Five Collections have ended. We began SPOS Six Collections in April. So total revenue from inception is approximately $75 million over the $204 million budgeted amount for SPOS Five. SPOS Six Collections to date are approximately $10.4 million. The amounts are currently trending less than budget currently because of, sales tax revenues are beginning to stabilize. The next slides are going to be the financial and graphical representation of the revenues and expenditures for collections and expenditures. This is a SPOS Six Collections, as you can see, a little bit below budget, and we just started, it's been not a lot of months. I'll provide this presentation after the meeting. An update. We are currently working on the updated outstanding items, questions list that we received last week from the auditors. There were a few big items that remain to be addressed to facilitate the auditors where they can begin starting work on the financial statements for presentation. So we remain on track for a good draft for these statements by September 30th. We remain on track. However, we need to make substantial progress over the next few weeks in getting them the information that they need. I'm prepared to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? I'm sorry, any questions from the board?
I have one.
Okay. Johnny, did you have?
I don't have any.
Did you have? Okay. You're good, okay.
Yes, I, hey, good morning, sir.
Good morning.
So, I know we're still talking about 2024 audit. I guess my, my question is going forward, because we can't keep on continuing in the same cycle of having a delayed audit. What, what steps are we taking to make sure that for next year's audit, that we are ahead of the process, so that we're not sitting here in September of next year talking about why we haven't completed a current audit?
Thank you, Commissioner. We've taken a couple steps. The team currently is working on the '25 audit in preparation so that we can get complete, back on track by December of this year. So we're currently getting information together for the auditors to come in sometime in the October, November timeframe to start work on that particular audit, and that'll get us back on track with all of the audits. The second step that we're taking is staffing, trying to provide additional staffing. I've been involved in several different interviews over the past few weeks, looking for accountants to help us in that area. And the third item to help us in getting back on track is we have two consultants on board that are well experienced in Tyler, as well as completing audits that are assisting the team in training.
Thank you.
A few slides back, you stated that we were trending about $30 million ahead, and it stated because of the increase in property values and increase in mileage. Can you explain that? Because I thought...
So the, the $30 million ahead is, is year-over-year. When we're comparing ourselves to fiscal year 23, I mean, 24, that's year-over-year, and that's primarily the result of the increase in the mileage rate.
Okay. From the 12.33 to the 15...
Yeah, we went from 12.733 to 15.733.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I want to also reiterate that the majority of that was for the public safety mileage piece to help in their area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is appointments. Is, is that something, you want to take, take that?
This is where we submit them to the hospital for the majority of the diligence.
You're welcome to vote on them separately.
You're welcome to vote on them separately or all together if you feel everybody is in agreement.
Okay, do y'all want to do them separately or all together? Okay. So I need a motion to approve the names to be submitted to the hospital authority. And those names are Joyce Rogers, she's an incumbent, Mike Griffin, and Rodney Bowler represents District 3, District 4. Dr. Michelle Nickel Gibson is an incumbent. Pamela Delaney, Delancy, and Bridget Lovinger for District 4. District 5 submittals are Dr. Sandra Green Harris is the incumbent. Stephanie Sloan and Dr. Kendra Garth. Can I get a motion to submit these names to the hospital authority?
I move that we submit these names to the hospital authority for their due diligence. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next item is consent agenda. If we have the county manager, please come forward and read the consent agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the community. This is your consent agenda for Wednesday, September 3rd at 9:00 a.m. Under the corner, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving a one-year agreement between the Henry County Coroner's Office and Forensic Medicine Associates, Inc., for the provision of medical examiner services at an annual fee of $180,000. Under the Emergency Management Agency, we have a resolution accepting the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funds for the purchase and installation of fixed generators at six fire stations in the amount of $821,484. The local match for Henry County is $205,371, which represents 25% and funds are available through the Capital Improvement Plan. Under Parks and Rec, we have a resolution awarding a contract to Prime Contractors, Inc., utilizing Sourcewell EZIQC contract in the amount of $395,639.35 for the Heritage Park Bridge Rehab, utilizing ARPA funding located in District 3. Under SPOS, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 4,844.25 square feet of right-of-way, permanent easement of 4,844.25 square feet, and a driveway easement of 1,306.80 square feet in Land Lot 109 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road widening, parcel 45, T-SPOS located in District 5. We have a resolution approving the Central Georgia EMC utility relocation, estimated cost for Mill Road widening in the amount of $107,769.24 located in District 5, T-SPOS project. We have a resolution approving the award for design services of Mount Olive Road at Chambers Road Intersection Improvement to Vanoss Hanjin Brutal VHB, Inc., in the amount of $367,800, SPOS 6, District 5. We also have a resolution approving the award for design services of Chambers Road and McDonough Road Intersection Improvement to VHB, Inc., in the amount of $315,800, SPOS 6, District 5. Under Technology Services, we have a resolution approving the purchase of 80 Panasonic Toughbook laptops and associated five-year insurance plans from CDW-G for the Henry County Police Department in the amount of $298,316. Funding is available in the Technology Services, Repairs, and Maintenance Account. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Okay.
I just wanted to just point out to the residents of District 5 that the items that you heard, the design services for Mount Olive Road at Chambers Road, and also design services of Chambers Road at McCullough, those are for the intersection improvements, which would be roundabouts. I know I've had a lot of residents ask about when we were getting improvements at those intersections, and those will be design services for the roundabouts, and the actual funding for the construction of the roundabouts will be included in our next T-SPOS. And there was also a resolution about acquisition of right-of-way for the widening of Jonesboro Road. So I just want to make sure that they understood that we are moving forward with projects for infrastructure improvements. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Parks and Rec, a resolution approving intergovernmental agreement with Henry County and Stockbridge.
Good day, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. Today, I bring to you a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between Henry County and the City of Stockbridge regarding their Bridge Fest/Hispana Fest event on September 27th, 2025. The state, Henry County, is providing $25,260.74 in kind services. That number is not correct. We did have to go back and update that number based on the overtime rate and the benefits. We had to add those numbers in there for staff. So the new total is $44,018.95. I do have a breakdown of what that looks like. The officers, so let me back up. The Hispana Fest/Bridge Fest was brought to us as a collaboration with the City of Stockbridge, with the District Commissioner and city officials with Stockbridge. We had a meeting in the end of last year, December, initial meeting, to discuss collaborating on this event. In January, end of January, February of this year, the representatives from Stockbridge and myself met to discuss how we move forward with what this event would look like. Apparently, there seemed to have been some turnover at the City of Stockbridge. We did not meet again until July to discuss the event. So I didn't have a lot of the details of what the resources would be for as far as PD and things like that until we were able to meet again. With that being said, the total number of officers that would be required to, for the event, the event, City of Stockbridge is doing a concert inside of the amphitheater, as well as a smaller concert area outside of the amphitheater in the park, parking lot, as well as Hispanic festival in the outside area. The request to collaborate was for Henry County to provide security officers for the outside area, not including the inside of the amphitheater, as well as directing the traffic around the area, as well as a kid zone area from the county as well. So to break down that cost, there's a requirement of approximately 16 officers, and that total cost for the officers would be $10,981.11. Parks and Recreation staff is a total of about 24 staff, that includes full-time and part-time staff, and that total cost is $10,111.84. The kid zone area, which will include our rec and roll trailer, which we already have, so there's no cost with that, our inflatables that we have to provide, which is $7,419, face painting and a balloon arch, which is $4,000. And this total comes to $44,018.95.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So with regards to public safety, what are our officers doing? I'm sorry.
They are providing the security for the outside area of the event and directing traffic. And I know Officer Garcia is here, he can explain a little bit more. He has been a part of the-
Come on up and talk to me, because normally the Sheriff's Department handles the amphitheater. It's very seldom that our officers do anything there. And then the other thing is my concern of our officers are doing the traffic outside. So I'm assuming that you're bringing additional staff in, that we're not pulling anyone off the streets to- Okay, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, our special operations division will be handling the event, so we won't be pulling anybody off the street.
Okay.
Our understanding with the collaboration between us and the City of Stockbridge is the City of Stockbridge will provide the officers for the amphitheater itself, inside the footprint. Everything outside will be handled by the county. And generally speaking, whenever the City of Stockbridge does something at that location, the Sheriff's Department is their normal partner. But with the collaboration between the county and them, we were asked to step in to do the security and the traffic control.
Okay. And was this in your budget?
I don't believe so. This was a separate ask for us to participate in.
Okay. Okay. And I guess why would we not just pick up calls for them and let them handle the amphitheater?
That I don't know, ma'am. We were asked to collaborate with them and provide the security outside the venue.
Okay, all right. And, okay, thank you, thank you. And JP, was this part of your budget, the $10,000 for staff and $11,000 for inflatables?
So the staff, the staff is extra. The inflatables and things like that, we have in our budget a line item for events, and we've been able to move some things around with our events, so we can absorb that in our event budget.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from any of the board members?
Yes, I'm the district on this, if I may.
Okay, let them ask their questions, and then I will turn it over to you.
So after Johnny will-
So the total cost to Henry County is $44,000?
Yes, that includes staff and the kid zone area.
And you said you can move things around within your budget to take care of certain items?
For the inflatables and the face painting and balloon arch.
So my question, how many events can you put on a year at $44,000 a pop?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
And no shared call from Stockbridge, because I'm assuming they're paying their officers or no shared call from Stockbridge for the $44,000, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, I'd like to know how many events can be done with a $44,000 budget throughout the next year. I wouldn't want to-
I would have to get that number to you.
Sink majority of your budget into one event.
Say that again.
I wouldn't want to see you sink a majority of your budget in one or two events. I'd like to see what it would, how many events can you sponsor at $44,000 a year throughout the county?
Okay, I would have to get that number to you.
Okay, so I'm kind of confused a little bit with these numbers, because initially, when the conversation took place, and the county manager can correct me if I'm wrong, because she was a part of the conversation, I understood that we were doing the kid zone area, because as Chair had mentioned, the Sheriff's Department does do the security there, right, for the amphitheater. Even with the Hispana Fest, I mean, this is a huge event, so other parks and, you know, cities, they don't do this big, huge event, okay? Because I know the Georgia, what is it, the Hispanic Chamber, I had mentioned to you all to reach out to them as well for sponsors. So when we initially started, I left the conversation with you all, but it was more so my ask is for us to collaborate and just have the kids zone. So all of this other, this is new to me.
So I must have misunderstood, and can you correct? I know you have some notes. I think that they did request in that meeting for PD during that meeting.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't, that's a lot.
So Vice Chair, during the meeting on December 16th, and again, at that time, the individuals that we spoke with are no longer with the City of Stockbridge. And so in my notes, I have that they were wanting the Henry County Parks and Rec to handle the events outside activities, which was the kid zone. And I have a note that states Henry County Public Safety External Control. And so I also have a note that at that time, the city had not determined a budget for this event. I believe I wrote down that the city, the note specifically was, this was not a budgeted item through the city, and that they were still working to determine what the cost would be. One of the things that I think the staff may not want to say, but I will say, is that we have struggled getting meetings with the city up until July, and that had been an issue. Meetings were scheduled, and that there had been just a lack of showing up for these virtual meetings. And so in July, when I think Jonathan reached out again and said, hey, look, we've got to get some details to get this secured, that's when we were able to get a better idea of what the ask was. But in December, public safety did come up.
Okay. So I guess the ask from me is the most recent conversation Jonathan, we had was, how are things going? You said everything was going well, but again, I only really wanted to consider us doing the kid zone as collaboration, because again, even if public safety, the Sheriff's Department is normally always on site for whenever they have events, right? So to me, I'm thinking when they assume that, that we would actually have a conversation with the Sheriff's Department, right? Because they consider them as county as well, right? But I would not approve this amount, because all I wanted was for us to collaborate was the kid zone, and that was through Parks and Rec. And if that was something that was in your budget, knowing that when you do your calendar throughout the year, if that was something like the bounce houses, face painting, that type of stuff, to show our collaboration, but not for us to do like Ferris Wheel, you know, something like that, I know we're not doing Ferris Wheels, but not taking it to that level. That was not what my assumption was.
Yeah, they did request a Ferris Wheel, and I told them we were not doing that.
Okay. So again, that would have been after the conversation that we initially started. Because as you noticed, I said that as elected officials, we were going to just do that first initial meeting, and after that, we were going to allow you all, the staff, to handle what we can and cannot do, right? So I was trying to leave myself, the council members, out of it. So now to this day, to hear $44,000, I know I would not want to agree to that. So again, I wanted us to do the kid zone part, which would Parks and Rec normally do, like we do our movies, something like that, to show our collaboration. Now, again, with the police piece, public safety, I want to go back to if that's something that the Sheriff's Department, because there are normally always the public safety that is doing concerts and stuff, because there is a concert, several concerts that'll be going on inside the amphitheater, and then the Hispana Fest stage will be on the outside area. So that would have been from the Sheriff's Office. So I'm concerned with that piece today. And we're right around the corner for this event to take place, but I can't rest knowing that public safety piece was added.
So again, that was a part of the conversation in December, the public safety piece. The only piece of this, whether it's Henry County PD or the Sheriff's Office, you all set the budget for all of them. And so even if we flip it to the sheriff, that's still an expense for the county, because those are still going to be county funds. If the idea was for the city to utilize the sheriff, that would have been a separate agreement between the city and the sheriff.
Right, and normally with Bridge Fest, they already have those agreements.
Oh, okay, and I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, Bridge Fest is their event, so that's why I'm confused. They already have that coverage through the Sheriff's Department, because they're on the inside and they're on the outside.
That I can't speak to.
And I wasn't a part of your-
They didn't bring that up.
That was never mentioned.
Yeah, and see, and I wasn't a part of the conversation. And I wish, when I asked recently how things were going, if that would have came up, because I would have clearly told him, no, we're not doing that.
Well, yeah, so when you asked me, you know, how things were going, that was after Econo, we were able to meet up with Econo, and we were able to identify everything. And so I figured everything was fine based off of the initial conversation that we would provide the outside security and the-
No.
provide the outside security and the kids' zone, because we worked through that, so...
Yeah. So the purpose of this agenda item is for you all to agree to an IGA. If the wishes of the district commissioner is not to include the public safety piece, then we just need to amend the IGA to reflect what you all will commit to, or at least what you would like to ask the commissioners to commit to.
I would like to ask only the kids' zone, as I originally stated in my conversation, for the kids' zone outside to show the collaboration. But again, bounce house, you know, and...
It's just about, it's just inflatables?
Inflatables, pay, just whatever that, that is, which is minimal. But it did show that we were collaborating with them.
So who will staff the kids' zone?
It would be Henry County staff.
So it would be staffing as well? So that's still the kids' zone?
It would be the kids' zone and then the cost for the staff. And I think you said twenty-four?
No, the Parks and Rec staff is ten thousand...
No, 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 the number of staff, twenty-four?
But the cost is what, ten thousand?
Ten thousand one hundred eleven, ten thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
And I'm gonna ask you another question before I, was there, because normally when you do your, because I know with me and my district, and so I'm being very transparent, I try to have the conversation that whatever your budget is, just to say, hey, are you able to do that in, like say, District Two? Because you're gonna already, you've already set your budget on activities. So normally what I try to do is say, hey, you're doing this, can you do it over here? Is, was this something that, was, is this something that is not a bearing, overbearing to your budget? Let me just ask it that way.
As far as the inflatables and face painting, no, because we, there were a couple of events that we did not have, and that's why we're able to make sure that we, we can do this.
Did you have something, question?
So I think we need some clarity of what, I guess Commissioner, can you give us some clarity on what is officially being asked for, or what the motion's gonna be?
So the motion is gonna be for the kids' zone only and not for the public safety. Remove the public safety and just do the kids' zone only with the inflatables that you, since you said you did not have the other events, that you're able to accommodate this collaboration for this event with Stockbridge. And it's kids' zone only, not public safety.
So we're still talking about a cost of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and some odd cents, correct?
Yes, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay. Quick mouth was good. So with that, I'll make my comments. So I think everybody knows I've remained consistent when it comes to the budget. We had to ask staff this year to make sure we did not increase our budgets, and ask them to keep their budgets the same. With that being said, cities are responsible for their own events and have been. I think it says a dangerous presence moving forward for each district, that we would be funding those city events. Colleagues said there's not other events of the same size, but arguably, the geranium festival is one of the largest events, as far as the festival, in our county. And we don't commit resources to that, to the city for that, or to the McDonald Alliance Club, which helped run that event. Similar events would be held in Hampton and Locust Grove. My concern is the slippery slope that we could find ourselves on with other cities coming to us, asking for us to fill those slots. With that being said, also I'll look at what were the district priorities? Looking at district priorities, I don't see that on the list when I look at that. So from being fiscally responsible for District Three specifically, and for the county, I don't see how I can support the request of this to the cities. If this was a county thing, whole different, whole different conversation we're having. So, thank y'all.
I just have one question again, and I may have missed this. How did we go from twenty-five to forty-four again?
Because of the time and a half cost and the benefits. The employees, so you have to add the benefits and then time and a half cost on there as well, because it's overtime.
So initially, it included public safety with this twenty-five?
Yes, and included public safety just at straight time.
So then my next question is, if it's twenty-two with just the kids' zone part, without the public safety, how is it just three thousand more with the public safety?
It's not, it's not just thirty, yes, forty-four.
But I thought you said initially, the twenty-five included everything at straight time?
At straight time. And I will say this, I did accidentally lead off the Parks Services staff from the Parks and Recreation number, which is a total of six thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and four cents.
Okay. So what you're saying, like even if we don't do public safety, right, and we just do the kids' zone, it still would be twenty-two thousand?
Correct.
So I'm asking, with the twenty-five that you say included the public safety with straight time, so you're saying it's just three thousand more, including the officers?
I'm a little confused with...
So, so I don't believe his twenty-five thousand dollar number initially included the Parks and Rec staff. So that twenty-five thousand, two sixty, seventy-four did not include your Parks staff?
The Parks Services staff, it included the recreation staff that was gonna be manning, right? That's gonna be setting everything up out there, making sure everything's going right, breaking everything down, all of that. It didn't include that staff. It had just included the recreation staff that would be out there manning the stations and mingling with the people and making sure that...
And, and public safety too though, right?
Yes, and public safety. But it was straight time, not time and a half.
Okay.
In that initial calculation.
I guess I'm just kinda confused, because even with time and a half, because if we can do the, everything now without the public safety at twenty-two, I guess I'm just kinda confused as to even with the time and a half, it's only the, or straight time where the, rather, would be the twenty-five that included everything?
So the twenty-five, if you add the six thousand, three seventy-four to that, that's thirty-one, almost thirty-two thousand. Then you do time and a half times that, and you'll get closer to that forty-four.
Does that make sense, Commissioner? Okay.
Ten hours.
How many hours?
Ten hours.
I thought you guys were only being out there like four hours. Because it starts at what time?
It starts at, I know we have to, everything starts, people walking around at eleven. Eleven to seven. And so we gotta set up, and we gotta break down.
Well, I just wanna say again, you know, and I guess my colleagues, I can tell that this discussion has been there, but I just wish that it would have came back to me as the district commissioner, to be able to, been aware of this increase, knowing that the initial conversation was for the kids' zone. And as I stated, and as you just stated here as well, that three other events were not, you didn't do three other events, correct?
There were a couple other events that we didn't do.
Right. So you had funding available. So when we're talking about other festivals and all of that, this is not in the same category as those events. Because again, the ask was, if we were able to do it, and like you just stated again, three other events were not done, right? And when you, when I asked you about the kids' zone, you said ten thousand, one hundred?
No, the kids' zone is eleven thousand, five hundred.
Okay, eleven thousand dollars. That doesn't include public safety. Did that include staff?
That doesn't include the staff. The staffing is separate from that.
So we'll be right at twenty thousand dollars?
The inflatables is seven thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars.
Seventeen.
And the face painting and balloon arch is four thousand dollars.
Okay. So right at the twenty-five that you initially stated then.
Okay.
All right. I just wish you guys would have had the, you know, came back with the conversation, because I don't get into Stockbridge, Locust Grove, whatever. I get into what value is bringing to our communities, right? Even if the geranium or any others are doing something, if it brings value, that's what the county is here for, if we can, if we can. So that's why I asked the question. And it was stated that yes, we're able to assist and collaborate on this event. So I just want to make that clear, that we're just not throwing money at one city over the other, because that could be what is perceived here. And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on my ask, okay?
So Vice Chair, I wanna, if I may, I want to respond to that. Because our Parks and Rec team and all of our team takes pride in any project that any member of this board has asked us to collaborate on. The only reason I believe, what I'm hearing from the board, that this is a concern, is because this is not a county function. And so if it were like a fireworks and we were collaborating with our four cities, I don't believe those concerns would be raised. It's not a matter of us not having the funding, because Jonathan has indicated that he has three events that, hey, we were not able to do those events. I think the issue here is because this project is a hundred percent a city event, that the commissioners have some concern with the funding. I don't think this is about funding any project, because again, we collaborate, I can pull flyer beyond flyer of collaborations, but a lot of times, those collaborations come with some other financial piece for the county as well. I, I think a lot of the conversation is centering around the lack thereof of conversations that our staff had with the city. And I'll be abundantly clear with this board, about three weeks ago, we were having a meeting and Jonathan said, hey, look, I'm not getting them to show up for these virtual meetings. And I said, if they don't show up for the next meeting, please let me know. We need to let the commissioner know, and we're gonna have to pull out. Well, guess what? They showed up for the next meeting. And so as you all know, when you all give a task to this team, our job is to carry it out. And so it was a request from you, like any other district commissioner, and any commissioner can ask us to collaborate, and we're gonna follow through. But when it gets to the money piece, and because there's an IGA, we have to bring it to the board. So I don't want you to feel like, hey, staff didn't include you. On December sixteenth, you told us what you wanted. The only thing we've got to get this board to agree on is what that cost is gonna look like. And if they decide there will be no shared cost, it is what it is, and we move on to the next task. But we're not going to ever ignore a request from a commissioner. We're just gonna follow our processes. And our process requires us to bring this IGA to the board for approval, because there, whether we call it in kind or not, there will be a financial cost to the county. So I just, I want to clear that up. I don't want you to think we misled you in this.
And I appreciate that. And I guess, moving forward, talking for me, if I bring something to you, the county manager and your staff, and we know off the top that this is something that we possibly cannot do, I want us to nip it. Because to me, what has happened is, this, a lot of time has been really wasted to me, because I wouldn't pay this, right? For even our staff, as well as Stockbridge, to say, hey, when it came to the public safety piece, we knew that was something that we shouldn't be taking on, right? So we shouldn't even entertain it. So if moving forward from me, even with the ask, if it's something that we get to this point, where we know we cannot budget for that, I want us to go ahead and just say, hey, this is something we definitely cannot do. And then we can move forward. Because what happens is now, we have, you guys have met, and now I think this event is when? Next week?
September twenty-seventh.
Okay, well, in a few weeks, well, September, a month, whatever. So that way, a lot of time and money and even with the Stockbridge staff, right? The pullout now, to me, it should have been pulled out a long time ago. So when they were not meeting, all I'm saying is the communication should have been sooner, because I would have told you guys, we're not doing that at all, right? And it wouldn't have even got to this point. It wouldn't even made it to the agenda. So I just want to just make sure, moving forward, that y'all just hear from me, if that is something, I don't want it to get this far. Because there's gonna be a lot of asks, citizens, if they ask, always say, let me get you to staff, right? That's what I always do. And then that way, they can let us know if we can or we cannot do it. So I, I want to make sure that I'm clear with that. And hopefully, my, all my cities and everybody, when it comes to me, if there is an ask, I want staff's recommendation off the top.
Understood.
And I appreciate you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I guess with, can I take this off?
You can, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess with this resolution, I just can't approve it.
You just want to table?
And just wanna, yeah.
Is that what we do, staff?
So, no, 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 not, you're, you're not gonna table it?
Okay, we're not table.
Either the board's gonna have to vote, or you can request that the agenda item be removed from the agenda. But it would take a motion and four votes to remove it from the agenda.
I mean, I mean, just so it'll be transparent, even for the city, knowing we did this, we can take the vote.
Okay.
Okay. Need a motion to remove from the agenda.
Can I make the motion to remove?
Is there a second?
Second.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item planned and zoning, GR dash twenty-five dash zero one.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members and Pillars of the Henry County Community. There it is. The requests before you is for property located on Lake Irma Drive, and the request is for the relocation of a number of graves. Subject property is shown on the aerial map here, and the request is for relocation of those graves. Property is located within that Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club subdivision. Subject property, as part of a larger request, was rezoned in August of oh-three for the purpose of the Crystal Lake community, with the location of the graves being a brief topic of conversation according to those BOC minutes. In approximately two thousand and four, thirty-five graves were identified as part of the White Foster Family Cemetery. Those thirty-five graves were relocated to the East Lawn Memorial Park on McGary Road within city limits of McDonough. Last year, in twenty twenty-four, a radar survey identified an additional sixteen unmarked and undocumented graves on the property. The applicant today proposes to relocate these newly discovered graves to the same East Lawn Memorial Park. OCGA Section thirty-six seventy-two provides legislation on the process for disturbing or relocating abandoned cemeteries, with the inclusion of application materials being detailed. ULDC would require a permit decision provided by the Board of Commissioners on this action. Application materials meet all state requirements, and newly discovered sixteen graves, again, are planned to be relocated to the same East Lawn Memorial Park as the original set of thirty-five graves. This is a survey showing the location of these newly discovered graves. I do not know where the original thirty-five were located. My understanding, it was, it was a little bit separate from these unmarked sixteen. Uh, with all that being said, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request for relocation, uh, with the following conditions outlined on the screen. Thank you, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Could you, not a question, it's a comment, could you pull up the, the map of the?
Yes.
No, the, go back a couple slides before that.
Aerial map.
So if you go, take your pointer, I guess to your left, keep going. Down, right, right, up a little bit, to the right just slightly. Okay, right on that, that golf course hole. So that's where, that's where the original cemetery was, so in relation to this property.
So on that side, right there, the green is where the other sixteen?
The green, the green is where the applicants are proposing to, to build a home. But where that, where that pointer is, that's where the, the original cemetery.
Graves on the site where the home going to be built?
The graves, uh, for today's, uh, item is located here on this property.
Okay. But this used to, I guess it would be like a, a park or? It was a cemetery, okay. Um, because it was some time ago that they moved those thirty-five graves.
Right, you say it was two thousand and four that they moved the graves?
Yes, approximately.
Right. And I think the family came during that time and was okay with the graves being removed.
Yes, according to those.
An applicant here?
Can I ask Kenta a question before they go? The thirty-five that were removed, were they graves that were marked and identified by names?
Um, I believe the applicant can provide that, um, clarification, um. They were, yes.
Uh, thank you for allowing us the time to speak with you on today. So to answer your question expli- explicitly, uh, some were identified and some were not. Of the thirty-five, I think fourteen were listed as unknown. And in my presentation today, I'll get to it towards the end, you'll see that, um, the write-up on it and with speaking with East Lawn, identified the names, because there were about four or five actual headstones, which is how, at that point in time, the emergency order was actually, or the emergency request was actually submitted to Henry County. Because unbeknownst to the developer, they actually had disturbed it and a decision had to be made in two thousand and four.
Okay, so you have a presentation?
Uh, very short, given the essence of time. Um, just a little bit about myself, and I'll, I'll let my husband speak first. But just a little bit about us and then, um, more about understanding what we're looking to do and why.
Good evening, uh, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Byron Johnson, this is my lovely wife, Rayland.
Can you, I love your talk.
I'm sorry.
This would be their ten-minute portion.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'm sorry.
So, um, this is a public hearing, and so we're going to let you present, you have ten minutes to present.
Okay, then, I'll be real brief. Um, I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan. My wife is originally from Birmingham, Birmingham, Alabama. And I say I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan be- because that's where I was born and raised. But I'll say this. My grandfather and his brother were born in Scraven County, Georgia. And the two brothers had twenty-four kids between the two of them. My grandfather was ran out of Georgia at that time, and he decided to do great migration to Detroit, Michigan. So with that being said, I've always had a passion to move back to Georgia, where my family roots are. With that, I started golfing, and I found this beautiful neighborhood in Crystal Lake. And I came home to my wife and I said, sweetheart, I think I found where we're going to land. And when I looked at, and she came out and she seen, all the properties were perfectly manicured. It was just a beautiful and luxurious, luxurious, um, estate and community. We found our home. And then we spoke to John and Jason, who owned the, owned the land. And they decided to work with us so that we can properly purchase this land. And we discovered there were some cemeteries, and what we wanted to do is do our due diligence and make sure we move them properly to their resting home where their family members were. And we're willing to pay any cost that we need to do to do that. And I'm just happy to, you know, present to you, the board and my wife and I, and I'll just let her go in there. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to go into the specific details. So, um, what Kenta just showed you was the actual location of the parcel. So, as he mentioned, back in two thousand and four, there were thirty-five graves that were identified. And so we're really looking at this as a continuation for what was approved back then, because considering that that is in the codex, and, um, our, the property that is in, under discussion today is about, I would say, two hundred or so, uh, feet northwest or northeast of where the original graves were. We do not know if a ground scan actually went broad enough to determine what, in that point in time, was still underground. So as part of, when we found the land, part of due diligence, um, we had an archaeologist come out, and this is what we discovered. Just a little bit of history, I think everyone's familiar here. It starts back in the early eighteen hundreds, of course, where the land was won in a lottery. So that's where you have Anderson White, uh, Mary and Mary Foster. We've done quite a bit of due diligence around the genealogical trace, just to make sure, we're, we're not making a rash decision to assume that, understanding farmland and the perspective that cemeteries, um, could be on that individual's property was active in the late, mid to late eighteen hundreds. The archaeologist was able to confirm that understanding ground penetration, um, and how the earth has been disturbed, he could say with a high level of confidence in his report, that's found as part of my application, that the cemetery was only active probably as late as the late eighteen hundreds. So, given the fact that, um, the original thirty-five graves were moved and we have identified sixteen more, we are looking for the board to support us with a permit to, um, make the Wa- White Foster Cemetery whole again. And the last slide here, just to give a little bit of context, if you're not familiar with East Lawn Memorial Gardens, it's actually a beautiful gardens that is in the McDonough area. And something that I learned as part of the research is that, um, the White Foster Cemetery, when it was actually moved, it sits in a center parcel around a circle by itself. No other graves are there. So if you see in the picture here, in the backside, you have more graves, you have the mausoleum to the right. We have worked with both them and their cemetery, um, or their funeral home division to, um, align on a plan, the plan outlined in the application, for the remaining graves to be, um, to, to be interred back, uh, alongside the original thirty-five that are there. Are there any questions for us?
Is there any questions from the board? Okay, uh, so this is the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anyone wishing to speak in favor, uh, can come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Harrell. My name is Jean Kessinger, I live at three-two-three Rocky Creek Road in Hampton. I am speaking in opposition. I want to make a statement first. We, all of us here, every one of us, we are the sum total of everyone that came before us. They deserve respect, they are what got us here. That's why we're here. Age and circumstance tells us that norms, morals and mores change over time. Morals should never change. Respect for the dead is something that goes without saying. We know the history from this cemetery goes as far back as eighteen twenty-one. Prior to that, it was Indian territory that the government took. Um, the Whites acquired it in the land lottery of eighteen twenty-one. Initially, there were thirty-five graves found, and now there's sixteen, twenty-some odd years later. The report by the archaeologist, request for permit under OCGA thirty-six seventy-two dash five for continuation or relocation of the White Foster Cemetery, indicates that it cannot be certain that there are not more graves in addition to these sixteen. Having said that, why are we moving sixteen when we cannot be certain that we will have all of them? Does that mean we're going to build a house, an apartment? What are we going to do with this land? On top of unknown bodies, that we don't know whether they're there or not? Maybe the best thing to do is to just section it off and not do anything with it and leave that historical value dating back to the early eighteen hundreds alone, like it should be, with respect. Last known grave, um, was nineteen nineteen, I believe. To say that a cemetery is abandoned and a cemetery is never abandoned, there's always somebody there. They're just not alive. Cemeteries come in many different ways, but rather than deal with that, I'm going to deal, I'm going to tell you something very personal. On July eighteenth of nineteen forty, a little boy was born. On July eighteenth of nineteen forty, a little boy died. That's back in the depression and war era. There was no many for graves for adults, much less children. This baby was, had a casket made from lumber boll that was borrowed and, and given to the father. He made a casket. The women adored it. A cemetery, a loud burial in the pumper section. There's no headstone. Headstones, those flagstones are headstones, that's how they did things back then. Or, as this man did, he tied a logger's chain and secured it to a young tree. It grew into the tree. After a while, there was just a bulge, and after another period of time, it disappeared entirely. Some years later, his sister was born, and she was the giant genealogical person of the family. For twenty years, the entire family of seven girls searched for their only brother. They never found him. This cemetery was so, developers made light of it, put an apartment house on it. This was my brother. I do understand what I'm talking about. Don't do this. To desecrate a cemetery, to remove a cemetery, a historical cemetery placed like this, speaks volumes about the lack of concern we have for our ancestors, all of us. I want to thank you for your time and consideration.
Any else, anyone else wishing to come speak in, um, opposition? Okay, public hearing is closed. I do have a couple of questions, um, I guess maybe for the applicant. Um, this particular location, um, um, is this where you are, you all are planning to go home?
Yes.
Okay, so, no apartments or nothing like that, okay?
No.
Um, and, um, when the archaeologists or whoever did your scan of the property, were they, were those the only graves that they were able to locate based on the scan that they, um?
Based on how RF technology is done, the ground that was scanned identified sixteen. As part of our plan, should there be more than sixteen that are located, they will be handled with the same amount of care to be moved to a final resting place. That's noted by the archaeologists, that science can only give us an estimate. We will not know until we dig.
Okay. That, that, that's the only question I have, okay?
And I want to quickly add to that, as part of staff's recommendation, uh, we did have a condition, um, speaking on that. Uh, that is condition one here. Uh, should more than sixteen graves be identified, uh, we need to come back to this board, um, for further consideration.
And I'll go back to the, um, the, the rendering, not that one, the other one. Okay, so basically, all around there, houses have already been built?
That is correct.
And that's the, uh, Crystal Lake community currently, right now? Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lewis, this is in your district, I'll just.
Yes, um, thank you. And, uh, first of all, I wanted to say, uh, thank you for your patience. I know you sat through the, the entire meeting. Um, Ms. Rayland, uh, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, and it was a great conversation. Um, and one thing I'd say, I wa- I was very impressed, uh, by you and how much you actually cared about what would happen to, to the graves. Uh, we had a, a long conversation. And one of the things that you expressed were that, uh, you and your husband wanted to pay for reburial of the graves. And actually, um, when we talk about respecting grave sites, I actually think it's, um, respectful to reunite family members together. So we have already removed thirty-five family members to the East Lawn Cemetery, where they will remain in perpetuity, as it is a, an established cemetery. Um, so to me, the humane thing to do would be to reunite the family members together. So, um, I, I commend you for actually being willing to take on the cost to reunite the family members. Um, I know, I know it is a sensitive subject when we start talking about, you know, cemeteries, and we start talking about ancestors, and, you know, when you start talking about certain demographics and, and, and people, um, you know, I know of cemeteries in my family, they haven't been revered. So, when we have an opportunity to revere family members and make sure that they are reunited with their family members, I actually think that's a good thing. So, with that being said, um, I, and I told you before, and I want to tell your husband, I just met him this morning, um, I want to be the first to welcome you
Thank you.
to Henry County, welcome you to our neighborhood, welcome you to District Five, welcome you to Crystal Lake. Um, to the conditions that we have stated, that if, if any additional, uh, graves are found, work will immediately cease, and those, uh, family members will be interred along with the others. And there was actually one question I asked you, um, when we started talking about this, just note, just noting where the original piece of the cemetery was and where, uh, your future home will be located. Uh, the question I asked you was, so these houses that are already in the cul-de-sac, um, do we know that they did not actually build on top of current grave sites? And you, we both said, you know,
No ground scan was done.
we, we can't, we can't answer. And so, so to me, and I'm, I'm just speaking for myself here, um, I would rather the family members be reunited with their family members that are already, uh, interred elsewhere at East Lawn Cemetery. Um, so, uh, with that being said, I do support your application, um, and moving forward. So, uh, with that, I would, unless any of the commissioners have any other comments, I would like to.
Question.
Oh, so go ahead.
Um, once they're relocated, I know we cannot identify them, but will each have their own placard? Um, because I know East Lawn have the little flat, uh, placards with the names. Would it be something like unknown, or how will that be to identify each individual grave?
It, it will. If you go, if you look here, um, to the top right, it has the names that were known, and then it has unknown, unknown, unknown. The intent will be for a headstone marker collectively with the sixteen unknown. So it will be unknown sixteen times to represent each burial.
And there's red circled there, that's where those sixteen will go?
Mm-hmm, so it's going to be inside, I cannot tell you exactly where, because again, that full portion is not used by the cemetery or not used by East Lawn for anything other than the white. than the White Foster Cemetery that was relocated there. So they will position them as required by their rules, and then we'll have a headstone created that acknowledges all sixteen individually.
And I think this is awesome, because where they currently are, I think it's a lack of respect, because no one is tending to that space, and at least now they will be in a beautiful manicured and maintained place where they can be honored instead of just being in the woods.
Thank you.
Your question.
So what a lot of folks may not know on staff, may catch you surprises, I at one time was a licensed funeral director. It's kind of odd. I hadn't thought about that in a while, but so hearing Ms. Kissinger, I hear her concerns, and I understand those concerns. I think it's important to recognize that the family was okay with this back originally in 2004, I believe is the year. And with that, I wouldn't normally support moving grave sites, but to what Commissioner Lewis said, is reuniting them, I think making it whole, that's what I wrote down, keeping that family together, is well marked already at the new cemetery at East Lawn. Thank y'all for doing the ground study, I would say first. That probably didn't necessarily have to be done, but appreciate y'all doing that. And then taking the care and moving them also, in a place where there is a monument, where the family can go and see them, to Commissioner Price's point, that is manicured and taken care of. There's a significant amount of cost that is into this. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Is there any other comments?
Second.
I do have a question. And I may have missed this. Did you all also reach out to any of the local funeral homes, because they have a registry, even if they service that area for those families, to see if they can be located?
To see...
Because normally in Henry County, you have your local funeral homes, that if they have serviced those families, they have record, because they have to be documented through the state of Georgia. Did you have conversation to at least see if those individuals could be identified?
So my approach was this. I actually focused more working with the Henry County Genealogical Society to try to trace family members. I eventually was able to find my way to Cannon Funeral Home. And I think most of you should be familiar with Cannon. Hopefully, I'm not pronouncing it incorrectly. But Cannon actually handled the move or the transition of the original thirty-five, and that was, they gave me quite a bit of information, but there was not much that existed. So other than my diligence of the Genealogical Society of Henry County to find a historical trace of more family members, and Cannon Funeral Home, those were the areas that I focused.
And Cannon is who you used to work for, correct?
Yeah.
So with that...
So you played with Raynor Carmichael.
Yeah. So with that being said, if they moved the first thirty-five, then clearly, they probably had the records to identify, or at least have some type of knowledge of, you know, back in the day. I just, you know, because the only thing is, I just don't want families to not be aware, because like I said, these are records that are kept through the state of Georgia. So with the other thirty-five, if there could have been a connection to those thirty-five to identify where those families are.
My understanding of how the process goes is, there will always be a trace back or a paper trail to the original location. And how I was able to actually locate the thirty-five originally being located in the actual community was through cemetery.com research. Again, the Genealogical Society, when you research, first starting with who actually owned the land and the chain of title, when you start to research there, any known burials or cemetery association has the paper trail, which is how I eventually walked my way over to find that they were located at East Lawn. So I think to answer maybe the question or the comment here, should any family feel as if they can identify relation to the sixteen that are currently on the parcel under discussion, there will be information that will lead them directly to East Lawn.
And it's possible also, because of the separation, that this possibly could be a slave cemetery or Indian, so they may or may not be related to the White Foster. It possibly could be a slave cemetery.
We researched that. We did a lot of research to understand if the White Foster family owned slaves, and negative evidence is still evidence, because understanding back in the mid to late eighteen hundreds how your census records were done, or how slave ledgers were actually created, the only thing you would have is male twenty-six or female twenty-three. They're put us at a dead end for being able to identify any family association. So you may be actually correct, but we were at a determination point for research.
Got a motion and a second by Commissioner Angler. There's no further discussion, all in favor. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Floss.
Madam Chair, as Rocky approaches, we do have one consent item of those others.
That the square footage was incorrect, and we'll need to bring that back to perfect the record. We can do it after Rocky does his three presentations.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the Our first resolution is a resolution approving a budget amendment in the amount of $2,750,000 and a bit of worth for the construction of Mill Road widening to Omshif Construction LLC in the amount of $4,972,235.70. One good news, this is our third project, T-S Plus project going into construction. As you can see, our McDonough Parkway is moving forward. If you're on 155 and you drive up the road, you'll see the bridge going up. We'll have a brand-new bridge going over 155 connecting Turner Church to the current McDonough Parkway. Rock Quarry, we started clearing last month, so if you drive by Rock Quarry today, you'll see a lot of work going on. And of course, today, we're on Mill Road. And coming up on the first quarter of 2026, State Route 81, Phase One, Jonesboro Road, Phase One widening, Bill Garner Parkway widening, and Furview Road widening, Phase Three. All of those projects are on the roadway. State Route 81, we have completed the roadway on that one. As I mentioned, this is for Mill Road, the location is between Jonesboro Road and the Flea Market. The Purchasing Department accepted seal bids number 25-79 for the construction of Mill Road widening. Nine seal bids were received. As I mentioned before, Omshif provided the lowest bid in the amount mentioned before. It is a T-S Plus project, and we also need a budget amendment, as I mentioned. And there's the location. This also will include a signal near the area where Semp's Club is located. So there's going to be sidewalks, lighting, so a big improvement for the area, four lane divided. And as you know, we are working on Phase Two of Mill Road that will take from the Peachtree Pedal Flea Market all the way to State Route 81. We're working with GDOT on that one on a scoping design. I will take any questions at this moment.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Lewis?
No questions, just thank you for the diligent work you have done for this. I know it took a while. We had some interesting condemnations and conversations with the business owners along Mill Road. But I'm just thankful, this is the first part of the Mill Road improvement. Looking forward to the second part, which will be widening Mill Road all the way down to 81, which I know the Chair is, would be happy about as well. So just, like I said, just another continuation of the infrastructure improvements they were doing in District Five, so I appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
And you know, Commissioner Lewis, this is important, because that is the cut through. When Seventy-Five is shut down, Mill Road is backed up in both, in all directions, even from the Mount Carmel side. So this is going to be, this is huge improvement to help, you know, to help with the mobility of moving people around, so very excited about this.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, move to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next resolution is a resolution approving the ward for the design services of Flipping Road and McCullough Road intersection improvement to Crowe Engineering LLC in the amount of Purchasing Department issued a request for qualifications, 25-78, for design services. Eight proposals were received and reviewed by a committee of Henry County staff and professionals. Here's the scoring and the companies. This is a S Plus Six project, and it's in District Two and District Five. And this will be most likely a roundabout, and what we're looking, Commissioners, is to have the design and also the construction done prior to the flipping extension opening. So this is a very needed intersection improvement, because once we open the extension, there'll be a lot of traffic on the road. So we're just thinking ahead, and we gave them six months to do the design, so roadway should be short, because it's an intersection, so less than eight parcels at the most. So hopefully have it under construction and complete it around the same time the extension.
Okay, awesome.
And that's the location. As you can see, the line in black, that's the extension, and those little hats, that's the complex, the Dutch Town School complex.
This is a two F-I project here. Didn't know I went F-I. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the District Commissioners?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, you know, because like I said, that intersection needs improvement, so it's long overdue. So thank you, Rocky, for you all pushing this, because I've actually went that way numerous times to get over to Freeman Road, which is named after my family, and it's kind of hard trying to get out of there, especially when it's really, really busy, events going up to Nash Farms and that area as well. So thank you for the hard work you guys did for this.
Thank you. And just to mention also, we will have sidewalks. I was just thinking about you, Commissioner. And of course, we'll have lighting, like we do on all our roundabouts, so you'll have lighting at the intersection as well.
I would think that you had heard that from me before. I appreciate it.
Okay, so I just need a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Next item, Rocky?
Yes, our last item is a resolution for the Board Commissioners approving a supplemental agreement for Kimling Horn in the amount of $292,000 for the design services of Furview Road widening. Henry County approved the design originally back in October of 2020 for the Furview Road widening, Phase Two, between Home Depot and Hearn. Kimling Horn has submitted a supplemental agreement in the amount of $292,000 for revisions and updates to the project. Funding is available in S Plus Five. Also in addition, we are in roadway acquisition right now. We started staking, and we're going to start acquiring roadway on this project as we move forward. And this is the location. It's between Home Depot and Hearn. As I mentioned before, Phase Three is actually on, we're about sixty-five percent on roadway acquisition on Phase Three, and that's going from Hearn all the way to the roundabout on State Route 155. And just like the previous Furview and Amber Block, you'll have lighting, eight-foot-wide sidewalks on both sides. One of the good things, once all this is connected, Commissioners, you'll have a lighting road and also a multi-use path going from 155 all the way to the Cap County line, and it's going to connect three parks as well, all the three parks that are located on Furview. So it's a great improvement that is coming to fruition, so.
Commissioner?
Outstanding. Again, long overdue. If there's no other questions, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. County Manager, do you have any comments? Come forward. Stephanie, is anyone signed up for public comment? Okay.
I don't have any comments, but Madam Chair, we need to go back to one consent agenda item, because the square footage was incorrect. So on the consent agenda this morning, the first Floss item, letter A, was a resolution regarding property along Jonesboro Road. I'm going to read the correct language into the record, and so it should have been a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 4,844.25 square feet of roadway and 6,530.57 square feet of permanent easement. And then we move to the further part of it, and the driveway easement of 1,0306.80. For the incorrect number that we had listed, was regarding the permanent easement. Madam Chair, I'll just need for you all to revote on just that resolution.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the update and amended resolution, correct?
Move.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Okay. All right, great. I need a motion to approve the minutes for August 5th, 12th, and 19th.
Motion to approve minutes from August 5th, 12th, and 19th.
Second. All in favor. Our next upcoming meeting is September 23rd. It's our regular BLC meeting at 6:30. October 7th, 2025, is our regular BLC meeting at 9:00, 8:00 M. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.